The Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday evening, September 18th, to order. Please, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
This is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Alan Tompkins.
Lord, let us please be kind, forgiving, non-judgmental, have wisdom, be charitable toward our fellow man making our decisions here tonight. And also, let us pray for Justin Pratt, who is a Marine who was critically injured in a traffic accident while in work today. He's undergoing surgery right now. Amen.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Lightner?
Here.
Commissioner Walls?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Here.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Chatwell?
Here.
All present.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Have a motion and support? Any questions, deletions, corrections, or additions? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We have no awards and recognition this evening. Are there any communications or petitions to come to the Board? Seeing nor hearing none, we have no special orders, no public hearing, we've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Public comment guidelines. Each individual will state their name and have three minutes to address the Board. You may only address the Board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time. Public comment.
I'm Jay Goodshow. I'm the village manager and on behalf of the village of Brooklyn, I wanted to express our interest, I guess, in approving the resolution pertaining to transferring the 911 administration or direction to the administrative part of the county, anyway. I won't go into details as to why, but I just want to express our interest in favoring that move. Thank you.
Tim McElDowney. Live in Spring Harbor Township, Fire Chief in Summit and Spring Harbor. I wanted to come up and voice my concerns about the timing of the switch of the 800 megahertz system. My concerns are that we're at the, what I believe, the eve of implementing that, and I just have some concerns with the timing. I was asked by this commission to be on the 800 megahertz board when we were looking at what radio system to go to. I served with Commissioner Lightner, Commissioner Walls, and Commissioner Elwell. I believe we came up with a good plan. I think it was well thought out. We put a lot of time and effort into it. My concern, again, is that we are literally a month or two away from implementing the largest upgrade to our 911 system that we've had since the inception of our consolidated 911. And my concern is that this should be delayed until this is rolled out completely and that we have signed off and approved on all the things that we've purchased and making sure that that is working to our satisfaction.
Thank you, John Wilson. Regarding the Lifeways bond, it's stated in the memo written by the Director of Lifeways Bond that the bond would be paid back through Medicaid funding. If so, would that be an increase in Medicaid funding in the near future or existing Medicaid funding that Lifeways receives? And if so, if it's existing Medicaid funding or future funding, then the Medicaid funding that is being used now for services there at Lifeways, what will replace the funding that would go towards paying back the bonds? And also, maybe the Director of Lifeways, if she is here tonight, can answer that, or maybe when it comes up on the agenda, the Board can discuss that. Also, last week in a M-Live article, the M-Live reporter stated that with the new convention center, that mortgage money would not, for the most part, be spent on the convention center, but they had drawings, renditions of the new convention center, and that monies from the August mortgage vote for the parks would be used there at the fairgrounds. If the Park Director is here tonight, maybe he can allude to what the SIPAT reported there. Thank you.
Tony Baer. I still have some questions about the Lifeways project. I know that in 1997, Hillsdale County and Jackson County created the Lifeways Community Mental Health Authority. And it appears to me that they're going beyond that original charge. They're getting to integrated care and primary health care. So I'm concerned, does that mean that the two counties have to go back and change the authorization that created it as a mental health authority to add all of these other responsibilities to it? Personally, I have concern with bureaucracies. They tend to grow, expand, get more intrusive into our lives, take over more and more of what we are doing. So I've always been leery of bureaucracies and bureaucrats that want to grow in power and authority. Part of this stems from what Ronald Reagan told us. The nine scariest words in the English language are, "I'm from the government and I'm here to help."
Any other public comment? Seeing nor hearing none, public comment is now closed. We have no special meetings or standing committees. At this time, entertain a motion for approval of the August 28th meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and support? Any questions, corrections, deletions, or additions? Seeing nor hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Consent? Agenda? Entertain a motion, please?
No.
We have a motion and support? Any items for removal? Seeing none? Madam Clerk, could you please post the roll?
It's not working. So we have to call it. Commissioner Lightner?
Yes.
Excuse me. Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Yes.
Commissioner Elwell?
Yes.
Excuse me. I have order. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Elwell?
Yes.
Chairman Chatwell?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Agenda has passed unanimously? We're at unfinished business? We have no unfinished business to come before us this evening? Yes, sir. Oh, I apologize. I apologize. I misread down. Item 13, Standing Committee Affairs and Agencies chaired by Vice Chairman David Elwell. Mr. Elwell?
So, Mr. Chairman, this is the issue of the Administrator Controller Transfer of Administrative Relationship with 911. And it's an issue that I will move by way of Resolution Number 09-18.30, which is attached. And if I may, there's also a timeline attached to Board Doc's that the Administrator is prepared on what would happen when.
You are making the motion to move the resolution?
I am.
I'm looking for support?
No.
We have a resolution and support. Any discussion? Commissioner Lightner?
Obviously, this, I feel like, came up quickly. And Commissioner Elwell and I were both absent from standing committees. And I just, I have issues with, I feel like, pushing it through so quickly. And, you know, at first response during study session, I was not in favor of taking action on this. I'm still not in favor of taking action on this. I just feel like I'm not at the convinced decision to remove authority from the Sheriff's Department to a county administrative department. So I'm going to be voting no. I've talked to numerous people in my area, and it could just be my area. I don't know. I find it hard to believe that the overwhelming response that I got was, you know, we're not in favor of this through numerous townships, other elected officials, other law enforcement, Fire Department, EMTs, and I'm just, I'm not supportive of this motion or this resolution at this time.
Commissioner Duckham?
I'd like to point out that nearly half the counties in Michigan use the administratively run 911 system. It works fine. I will be supporting this administratively run system. I'm doing so. It's not a dig at the sheriff or a way to get back at the sheriff. This is, I want a 911 system, 911 system that our citizens can depend on, that's effective, and at the same time, providing a safe action area for our emergency responders to get to and to get to the right place as quick as possible. And I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Thank you, Chairman. Just two quick questions. First question is, with the 800 megahertz project, I'm just curious if we've looked into what type of effects this change may have, if any? And then my second question is going to be the 911 Advisory Board. I'm just curious to the Board members, the makeup of that board, like the requirements for the makeup of that board.
Administrator Overton, would you like to answer the questions, please?
The law spells out some of the membership, that there should be an MSP, a Michigan State Police person appointed, the sheriff, he or his designee appointed. And then, of course, it talks about, in our bylaws and stuff, talks about having a township police chief, township fire chief, a county commissioner, you know, that sort of thing. It's spelled out all in the bylaws there on that. The timeline would indicate that it would be November 30th before it would become effective. Gives us time to contact different people out in the township, see who is willing to serve on the Advisory Committee. And as far as the 800 service goes, I think as was stated, we're almost at the close of that, ready to move that forward. In fact, all the work primarily is done. It's just a matter of testing now. Physically, it's all put together. I have great faith that the undersheriff is very much a professional and will continue in his capacity as the undersheriff and the person responsible for finalizing the 800 radio megahertz system.
You had a second question? All set? Okay. Dr. Tompkins?
When I brought this up at the townships that I service, three out of the four were very concerned about certain aspects of it, ranging from confusion with the 800 megahertz system, and why don't we delay it to January, and it's us against the sheriff, and it goes on and on and on. Okay? So I listened. It's my job. And then I also listened to some people who are first responders, okay, with the ambulance and EMTs and so on. And there was one particular thing which bothered me, that there was an accident involving young children, and the EMT person was two minutes away, but they did not have them go, even though they volunteered and they had someone come from 12, 14 minutes away. Now, to me, that's wrong, okay, and so on. But that's because there's no oversight. So I'm concerned in regards to, I understand the township's desires, but I'm also concerned about the health and the safety of our residents. There has to be some oversight of what goes on there, okay? And there is no oversight now, okay? I would like to have someone from 911 come and tell us what goes on there, and why are they doing this, and why are they doing that, and so on. Hold their, you know, their feet to the grinder, so to speak, okay? And we don't have that in my two years here. I have not seen any of that, okay, and so on. So I think that we do need to have some oversight, okay, of that, okay, controlled by the citizens and the fire chiefs and police department and so on and so forth, so they can answer the question and have better service to our constituents. So right now, I think I'm torn in regards to which way to go. I think that maybe we should table this till next meeting and give more time to discuss it with our townships and so on, because I brought it up and it was the first they heard of it, and so on. And that's how I feel about this. I just, there's two ways to go. I want to go the right way, but there's local townships, and then there is a benefit to the entire community. And it really bothered me about the person who didn't, was not allowed, okay, to go to save those two children, okay, and they had to call somebody else from 14 miles away. And to me, that's wrong, because the closer you get to a trauma, the faster you get there, the more chance of survival and so on. And who knows about that? I was told this by the EMT person's husband, okay, and so on, and paramedic. And I didn't hear about it before, okay? And that bothered me. And I'm thinking, who answers? Who answers to who? Okay? Who makes sure everything is going right? And there's a defect in the system if we don't have some oversight. So I can't tell you where I stand on this. I'm leaning towards no. But I would probably, I would request some more time. I know we've done it and studied it and so on, for the townships to understand what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Mr. Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'll say that the conversation about doing this isn't new. It's at least three years old, if not older. And Commissioner Tompkins has mentioned just one issue of many. I'll say on the front end that we have good employees there. And people make mistakes at times. I make mistakes. Dispatchers make mistakes. And the concern for me is that mistakes get made and don't get corrected. I think the decision that we're going to make tonight is going to be much like the decision we made as the Board of Commissioners about the Road Department or Road Commission. And that was pointed out to me by another Commissioner. We took back oversight of that and did away with the three appointed members there. And in my opinion, we've come light years in a short time from where we were with what we have at the Road Department. If you think about it, the Board, this Board already has oversight of nearly all other aspects of dispatch, including the funding level, the location, the equipment, liability for actions there. And this is the final piece in that puzzle. It's important to also note that, in my opinion, this action has absolutely nothing to do with the prior recent actions of the sheriff. It's a totally standalone issue that I think we have an obligation to take and to do, to bring that center to what it should be for the public. We haven't spoken publicly about issues there often, and I personally don't think we should. We don't need to be throwing anybody under the bus. I've talked to some of you Commissioners about some of the issues there. I keep track of them. I have a long list, but again, this is not to throw anybody under the bus. There are good employees there. We just need to have sunshine brought to that operation. This Advisory Board will do that. It's open to the Open Meetings Act. And police departments, fire departments, EMS will have access to those by way of their appointees and by attending. And when decisions are recommended by that Board, everybody will have input that's relevant to it. This change in reporting to the Administrator's Office is not a new topic and has been discussed a number of times. I've heard rumors swirling that all the employees there were going to have to resign and reapply. Those things aren't true. We're talking about taking administrative control of dispatch and putting it with the Administrator's Office. Until now, when problems arose at dispatch, we had no way of knowing if corrective action was taken. We had no say or knowledge in who would become Director over dispatch or what experience, level, or skills they'd bring. Now we will. With an Advisory Board, again, there will be public input from each of the disciplines regarding dispatch. And I'm confident that as we transition through this oversight change, we'll come to appreciate the move as much as we have with JC DOT. JC DOT is a larger financial responsibility, many times, probably four times greater financially. But I say that 911 is a more important department for us because of the service that it provides. I appreciate the input from Deb and the work that she's done on it. We learned through an email that there are a majority of counties in the state, potentially as many as all but 12, that operate a civilian dispatch, which is what we're talking about. I attended the 800 megahertz training last week, trained the trainer training with 17 others, and it's going to be a great system for us. I'm very glad we did it. I'm going to be just as thankful, I think, when we have this decision done. It is scheduled for testing shortly. There was a concern expressed to me by one fire chief about whether the undersheriff would continue the project or not. And I recall that it's a contract that we have with Motorola to complete the project. MSP and MPSC are both assisting. And the undersheriff, in my opinion, has done a great job of looking out for our interest in that. There was a police chiefs meeting in our county today. I wasn't able to attend because of the bad accident we've heard about. But the undersheriff there committed that regardless of what we do, he's going to see the project through. So that should not be a concern for anybody here. The timeline that the Administrator has laid out in the attached documents has this happening essentially on November 30th. I think testing of the system is scheduled for next week, or later this month, I'm sorry. And I just don't have any concerns about that part of the system, and this is a separate issue from all of that. So I pointed out to all of you that my 38 years in police work locally here and my talking with other police and fire chiefs, some of which don't want to come here and talk, but did support our move. It's important to know that, and this is the right thing for us to do. And I also think it's the right time to do it. I don't think delay serves any useful purpose, and I will be voting yes on it. Thank you.
Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Listening to my fellow Commissioners here, it sounds like probably every one of us was contacted by some member of the public or a person who was a first responder or somebody from their prospective township. And I myself was contacted by several people. And it's been a long time ago, a long time ago, but I actually operate as a 911 operator. I also supervised in 911. It's an extremely difficult job. That's to put it mildly. It's not for everybody, that's for sure. It has all kinds of things that by nature, people just weren't supposed to have to deal with, listen to, and respond to. That being said, the biggest responsibility a 911 operator has is to the safety of the public and to the safety of the first responders on the street. And what I did, and people that have known me for quite some time, not just eight years as a Commissioner, they realize I do my homework, I do my research. I talked to all these several people. I did my homework, I did my research, I looked into this. And really what came down to me was, it isn't about the people working there. It's about what can we do to make this the most efficient and effective and best operation for the safety of the public and the first responders? And the 911 system has had two, three years, like Commissioner Elwell said, to make some changes. They added supervisors and things like that that were brought up by the county commission. But as I went through all that, I thought, the best way to make this the most efficient and effective, utilizing the people there that do a good job, is to go ahead and follow up on and follow through with this resolution. So I will be voting yes.
Commissioner Walls?
I was on the fire service in the early 80s when Central Dispatch was brought into play. We used to get our calls on our personal phones at our home. Somebody would go down and set off the siren, and that's how everybody got notified. At that particular time, Jackson County was on the cutting edge of around the state by first stepping out of the box and starting the 911 system. At that time, it was ran by Director John Tuttle. Helped bring it to fruition and put it on the map and started going. And then as time went on, we took and turned it over to the sheriff's office. I do know that there is a lot of good people down there at Central Dispatch, and like many of the Commissioners have alluded, is that it's not a job for anyone. It's very demanding, it's very heart wrenching, there's just so many things that go on there that I, for an individual that has not been in the emergency, I was an emergency EMT, it's just not cut out for anyone, for everyone. I support this move, going back to a director. It's the way Jackson County started. And I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Any further Commissioner comment? Commissioner Lightner?
Just real quick. You know, I don't know what the issues are, because I don't work in law enforcement, Dave. So I just want to say that. And the only issues I heard of with the dispatching are the addresses. So frankly, that's already something we control, that we haven't been able to do a great job in some areas of the county, just for lack of communication and compromise, I guess. So that's just one of the things, one of the other issues that I have within our county that it's not necessarily the Sheriff's Department's issue, it's addressing issue that still needs to be taken care of for the safety of our residents. So that was just, that kind of went in together with that, but regardless, my vote says still no.
Any Commissioners? We have a resolution on the floor with a second? Any Commissioners?
I'm a yes.
Let's vote. Commissioner Elwell?
That's all I had to report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Standing Committee Human Services?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Apologize for interrupting you.
Please continue.
Thank you. Human Services has no business becoming for the Board tonight.
Standing Committee Personnel and Finances chaired by Commissioner Phil Duckham. Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no business to conduct tonight in personnel and finance.
Thank you. Unfinished, we arrived at unfinished business for the second time, and we have still none to come before us. Move on to new business. Finance, friend of the court, health department fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. Administrator Overton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Administrator, we're asking for approval of the friend of the court and the health departments fiscal year 18-19 budgets. And the, these two funds are on fiscal year ending September 30th, beginning October 1st of the year. So we have to approve these budgets prior to October 1st. The friend of the court budget, we're asking for $3,673,319,000 in total expenditures for that fund. For the health department, the total expenditure budget is $7,801,452. The majority of the revenues of both these funds are from federal and state grants that we repeat, that we receive every year, and that's one of the reasons why the funds are on a September year end. It's consistent with the state fiscal year. However, both of these funds do require some support from the general fund. For the friend of the court fund, it requires a transfer of $225,081, and for the health department fund, it requires a transfer of $219,701. And I might add that we also have in your materials detailed descriptions of all the programs of each fund, including the up to 33 different programs of the health department. So again, we ask for your approval. Thank you.
Any questions? Small, unmarked, non-sequential bills? Is that how you want us to?
Yes.
Mr. Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim, just one question on the health department budget. It shows as page one, down towards the bottom, it shows the line for net increase, decrease in parentheses and fund balance. It's a huge decrease of $890,000, which is $500,000 more than last year. Is there any one thing you can attribute that to or easy explanation?
Well, it's just indicative of the increased salary and fringe benefits. In other words, we're building in the budget increase to healthcare of at least 5% and there's a 2% increase in salaries. There is no change in personnel, so that reflects that. The, the health department fund itself, there is a buildup of fund of reserves over time, and not to get into complicated discussion, periodically for the health fund and other funds as well, is we draw down those reserves. And so that, that minimizes the, the cost to the general fund and so forth.
Thank you, and thank you for your work on it.
Any other commissioner questions? I'm looking for a motion for approval of the fiscal year 2018-2019 friend of the court and health department budget. So vote. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Could you post the vote, please? Thank you. 17B Administrator Controller, Michigan Indigent Defense Fund Commission Funding Compliance. Administrator Overton.
Thank you, Chair. This is a request from MAC, Michigan Association of Counties, to, asking that the board agree to join a lawsuit to bring a stop to the MIDC program, primarily because the law that the legislature passed said that they would fund this program 100%. MAC went as far to have Miller Canfield prepare a legal opinion, and their opinion states that they believe that the state currently is in violation, MIDC, by proposing that they give us 20% and then we pay all the bills and then they give us money down the road, which from past experience, that may be six months, that may be a year from now. While the law says they should pay it all right up front, because it's a brand-new program, they want us to start it. MAC needs some counties, and they're looking for about a dozen counties, frankly, to join them in this, because they're an association. They are not a county. They do not have standing. We do. They have money set aside for this lawsuit. I do not anticipate that it would cost our county much, if any, for this lawsuit, but I do believe that it's important that we take a stand. Too often to state, frankly, they pass laws with no funding and force it on the locals to figure out how we're going to pay for it. And you know how that goes. We end up having to cut services or increase taxes and, you know, one or appealing.
So move the request.
Motion in support to authorize the Administrator Controller to join the MAC in filing a lawsuit contingent upon the outcome of a scheduled meeting should a resolution not be found with regard to the funding of MIDC standards. We have a motion in support. Any questions? Commissioner Elwell.
Just a comment. I'm glad we're getting to vote no. I'd rather vote no on it because our current system works, but I'm happy being able to vote no for this reason.
Well, actually, I'm asking you to vote yes.
Yeah, you know what I mean.
Commissioner Leitner.
I was at MAC the day that we got this legal opinion, because I serve as judiciary chair for Michigan Association of Counties, and I forwarded all this information to Deb and told her, because the state had also sent us a contract saying, hey, here's the contract, we'll pay you the 20% and then we'll pay you quarterly. So that's one of the things that was just kind of left out in comments. And basically what this does is it says, no, we're not going to sign that contract now. I mean, yes, we're still bound by standards by law, but as far as the compliance with the contract, the yearly contract that they have, this hopefully will make us whole and make the state make us whole upon, you know, starting these indigent defense standards, because otherwise, you know, we're going to end up in the same situation like with the childcare fund, where we're asking for $750,000 at the end of the year to pay for something, because we still haven't received money from the state. So I'm in favor of this motion. So anyways, I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, one more question. Is there any update on the Oakland County lawsuit that we're aware of?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Everyone should have the vote in front of them.
Could you repost that, please? Mine is missing.
Yes or no?
I just want to make sure I didn't vote like Commissioner Elwell said.
Voted yes.
Okay.
We have no other new business to come before the board. We return to public comment. Each individual will state their name. You have two, two minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity. You may not yield your time. To others, board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. Second public comment. Any public comment? Seeing none, commissioner comments? Mr. Tompkins.
Mike, could you answer those two questions brought forward in the beginning about the parks and the lifeways? I think that our public deserves any answer in regards to those.
The, on the park side, the county fairgrounds is a county park. It has been a county park since the institution of the county first. And second, the boards of commissioners have already allocated funds to pay for the new convention center and all the improvements that are going to be done to the lot and the removal of the track, and everything is already allocated, and the board of commissioners through the Administrator Controller's office have bonded for that service to make up our portion of the money, other than the gift that came from American One. So that's the first one. The second one, on the lifeways, I'm going to yield that to Michael.
If, if I understand correctly, the last comment we heard from Mary Beth on this was that they've had to send money back as much as $3 million, because they couldn't use that money. So if we aren't cutting services or increasing taxes or anything like that, that's money that was sent to the county, and if they can't use it, they have to send it back. So they're going to take that money and channel it into making these improvements, is how I understand it from Mary Beth.
One more comment. Does, and I thought about this, I forgot to mention this. Throughout my career in medicine and surgery, I've always had to have oversight, okay, from quality committees to the government, to the state, okay, to the hospital, executive committees, and so on and so forth. Everybody's looking at my charts, okay, my operative notes, and someone to make sure that I am doing a good job, an appropriate job, and not screwing up with people's lives and so on. So when I was thinking about that and this, the 911 issue, I thought heavily and I said, you know, there does need to be some oversight. There's oversight on everything in life, okay? Throughout my entire career, there's been oversight. And I think that oversight's going to make the safety for the public better, okay, and so on, and that's why I changed my vote.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Tompkins, in his invocation, asks for prayer for a seriously injured young marine. That young marine works at Modern Waste. He was behind one of the trash trucks parked alongside the road today, doing his business, and a car, a vehicle hit him and pinned him between the back of the truck and the pickup truck. He is in very critical condition. We really wanted to make it through tonight, so prayers, he needs prayers. If he can make it through tonight, he's got a much better chance come tomorrow. And he was doing everything right. The sun was, and the oncoming, or the driver's eye is approaching the back of the truck. Didn't see him, didn't see the truck. And he is very critically injured. I've never had this happen to Modern Waste before. I'm not really concerned about that. I'm concerned about this young dad with two kids at home, and he needs prayers. Thank you.
Commissioner Leitner.
We have an event coming up at the fairgrounds on October 6th. We have a special event, Here Come the Mummies. Tickets are on sale right now at the box office. You can get them on etix.com as well. It's going to be in one of the barns, I think barn seven, you know, in October. So that's coming up. Just want to let people know about it.
Any other questions? I'd like to extend an invitation to the public to attend the next Parks Board meeting, which will be at 8:00 AM at the county fairgrounds on the first Wednesday. At that time, we'll be announcing the strategic planning pathway for the county park system and where the resources can be allocated going forward with the new millage that passed for our park system. And I hope that we can get the general public to participate as we form partnerships with townships and other organizations going forward that really want to see what's going to happen with our parks. 8:00 AM, first Wednesday in October. Michael Way is the chair. That is October 3rd at the fairgrounds. Yes, sir.
I know this chairman usually goes last. I apologize, you just brought something to mind here. Anyone who discussed lifeways or has an interest in knowing exactly what's going on and why and why it has to happen, Lifeways has its meeting tomorrow night at 7 o'clock at Lifeways Northwest Ave. And we have a strategic planning session at 6 o'clock. So if you're really interested and wanting to know why this has to happen and why this is an excellent idea, show up. If not, I guess you won't know.
Seeing none, we have no closed session tonight, and entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion in support. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, duly carried.